That's an easy battle.
It's all good.
Yeah, this was an easy battle.
See?
You too.
Like, oh yeah, December 12th.
All right, it is 1:30 and we are here to hear. Now, are you ready? All right, it is 1:30 and we are here to hear file BLA 004624, Boundary Line Adjustment Appeal. Commissioners Corn and Williams are present. Commissioner Bradshaw is not present, and I will open with the same question to the appellant. Do you want to continue with just two commissioners?
We're ready to proceed.
All right, given that, we will turn it over to Planning. Anybody, I haven't read any hearing. Do we need any hearing accommodations? Anybody need anything extra?
I should probably ask for conflict of interest.
Yep, all right, and do we have any conflict of interest from the board? Commissioner Corn?
I know, John.
You have to answer conflict question.
I have to answer conflict questions?
The question is, do you have a conflict of interest by definition? So does?
Is he currently representing you on any cases? Do you have any joint business ventures together? Those kind of things would be a conflict.
Nope.
Commissioner?
I just want, uh, no, no.
Commissioner Williams has no conflict. With that, we'll turn it over to the staff.
Dave Fisher, Planning. I apologize if I get out of any formalities or anything. I haven't done this in a long time.
No worries. We'll ask you tough questions to get you back into.
So, the applicant applied for a boundary line adjustment, which would adjust the three listed parcels on the memo, dividing the middle one ending in 7901A, between the other two to end with two total parcels. After reviewing the Bonner County Revised Code, the adjustment was denied by the Planning Department. When the project was first presented to us, Tyson Lewis emailed the applicant recommending a certificate of compliance and pointing out setback in depth-to-width issues. We later met with the applicant and again recommended a certificate of compliance as the correct way to validate or resolve the parcel issue. The certificate of compliance was never applied for. In reviewing and denying the application, the Planning Department focused on two key points. First being that the middle parcel, again, ending in 7901A, appeared non-conforming. The deed recorded on 6/20/21 gave a legal description of the parcel, including the parcel to the west as one single parcel. This matched the assessor records and was considered the governing deed. The correction deed was later recorded on May 12, 2022, which corrected the deed from 1998, which was not the correct or governing deed. The second point of focus for the Planning Department was parcel number three, ending in 7942A. This parcel had a non-conforming depth-to-width ratio of 7.16 to 1, where 4.2 to 1 is required. The boundary line adjustment proposed increasing this non-conformity to a 7.9 to 1 ratio. This is expressly forbidden in Bonner County Revised Code. Section 12-612G4 states, "Those existing non-conforming features shall not be made more non-conforming." For each of these reasons, this application was denied by the Planning Department.
Are you ready for questions?
Sure.
All right, any questions from you, Commissioner Corn?
Nope, not at this time.
I had a couple of questions, because one on, anyone can go into the recording office and change an instrument. So what it looked like to me when I was reading the staff report is that there's an original legal description that's been accepted, but then there's been subsequent changes, and then changes are being requested on the subsequent changes, which would make it more non-conforming. Is that kind of essentially what we're?
I apologize, you lost me a little bit there.
So you have on the first part, the first instrument change of 536593 is what's deemed legal and appropriate of the deed itself. And then subsequent, there's a few more filings of the same, of different instrument numbers that are not corrected. They're calling them corrected deeds, but they're not legal deeds. Is that what the argument, part of the argument in the staff report is?
Yes, it's my understanding that in previous times, people could record things without going through the Planning Department proper procedure.
And so when I looked at the paragraph that said, "Instrument 1005314 was recorded on May 12, correcting instrument 536593," which is the original deed, that that action was not a technically correct action. It was just something that was recorded, which is a problem we have sometimes in recording, where people just record it, but it doesn't make it so unless it was the legal deed. Is that what this paragraph is telling us there?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's the only thing I wanted to clarify is that the subsequent filings were, what we're calling illegally recorded. And the word is used in that second paragraph.
So when, one thing is, and there's a statement in the original staff decision letter, Jacobell Planning Director, that talks about certificate of compliance in 12-616. When we're evaluating whether or not a lot is legal, which this application isn't for that purpose, right? They're asking, can we adjust these property lines on these unplatted parcels, right? So it's not, it hasn't been platted, it's not part of a subdivision of any kind. So that's where the Boundary Line Adjustment Code comes in. We used to not regulate boundary line adjustments. That code was added in 2021, I believe. Since then, we've been regulating this. That being said, the controlling deed, I think that's the verbiage that Anna was using, is the deed that was effective as of the date of our title, which was November 18, 2008. So there was a subsequent deed recorded in 2022 that corrected a deed from 1968. Bill has some case loss about things he can kind of give you to help understand that, the deed recording and which one is a controlling deed. The way we see this is that the effective deed, as of the effective date of our code, is what's controlling in this case, which only had two parcels. But the third parcel that they're adjusting, we're saying it's not a legal lot that can be used for building purposes.
And so, and I understood that aspect of it, and that's where, I guess what I was getting at was, the subsequent deed corrections are, that doesn't make it a legal deed correction. Is, it just makes it a correction that has been put on file, because anyone can go into the recorder's office and say, this is a recording. But the, but what the board has to weigh against is, what is the controlling deed, using your word, which is the original 536593, which was subsequently changed by recording documents, but not, but it still maintains it as the controlling deed for the property.
Which was the deed that was effective? I don't have the deed number memorized.
No, oh, I'm sorry. I am saying, I'm saying it on purpose so that, because there's multiple instrument numbers. So the first one that we're calling as the controlling instrument deed is 536593. And then the subsequent instruments we're saying were used to change that original instrument number.
The controlling deed in this case is the final one that was recorded on, in 2001, ending in 360. That's the one that we're seeing as the, because that was the controlling deed when the code was changed and the effective date in 2008, our land use code.
So you're not using the instrument from 1998?
Right, so the 1998 deed, those were subsequent, it was all changed and then the 2001 date is the controlling deed that we see of the building.
So then, my question then would be, why are we not using the 536593 as the controlling deed? That's the one created in 1998? Am I misunderstanding? Because when you say, when you, that's where, that's why I'm using the numbers on purpose to make sure I'm not confused on it, because when I read it through, the original deed is the one ending in 93, and there's subsequent filings post that. But how is 93 not the controlling one?
93 wouldn't be the controlling deed, because it came earlier in 98. And so in 2001, they filed a, recorded a new deed saying, "This is the legal parcel, this is the owner."
How does that, how does just filing another one change what was originally on?
When we look through how we look at legal lots, what was the deed, the effective deed as of November 18, 2008? And in that case, it was the deed from 2001. Because that was recorded after, that's the controlling deed.
Then that brings my question though, is you can record anything. So how did we choose which one?
Well, the.
Because that's part of what their argument is, is how are we picking which one we can say moves? And so if there was a deed recorded in 1998 and then a subsequent deed recorded, how do we choose between which one of those is the controlling deed? What's, and then maybe that's the legal question. Which one is the controlling deed of those two?
At the time when the land use code was adopted in November of 2008, they had to draw a line in the sand and say, "From here forward, everything, everything has to conform to our code. From here backwards, here's how we're going to interpret non-conforming lots." So, and the way that code reads, if, I don't have a committed memory, it says, whatever the, whatever the deed is on file as of right now, that's the controlling deed. So if, if something was made in a non-conforming status, whatever that final deed is, is whatever we're going to consider the controlling deed.
So it didn't matter that it was on top of one that already existed and we didn't conform?
Whatever that final one is.
So then, how do we, so we call the rest of the instruments illegal formations solely based on the fact that they are made after the year?
Yeah. And Bill has some more input as to the correction deed that corrected the 1968.
Because you can just, if you want to. So maybe this is a Bill question then.
I would like to, I would like to give John the opportunity to present his argument first, and then let's give him, you know, if there, if the board still has questions after he's been able to do that, then we can do, we can definitely have this conversation. But I think we're, we're putting things out of order by not allowing him to present his case right now. And we can still address all these issues.
Well, I was asking for clarification on what staff is reporting, so that when John presents his, I'm understanding the difference between the two, because they have a disagreement. But if you want John to go next, that, that's fine, and I'll hold my staff question until after.
Yeah, I do, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. All right, John, it's up to you then.
Thank you, commissioners. You okay if I move this a little bit over here?
Yep, you can take the microphone and sit down or come over here if you want, whichever.
Oh, why don't I go up there, then I'll have a podium with the holding my paperwork. All right, John Finney for the record, representing the applicant. And I'll say, unfortunately, a lot of terms were thrown out, and I'm going to try to cover all of them. But if, if I'm confusing something, your minds maybe stop me instead of waiting until I get to the end.
Yep.
But so, in my opinion, boundary line adjustments have been regulated by the county for quite some time. They were not subject to review until more recently. And I don't have that date committed, but there have been Bonner County Revised Code provisions dealing with boundary line adjustments. And as stated, we were dealing with two unplatted parcels. And so what the code used to say, as long as you didn't decrease the smallest piece, if you're dealing with multiple pieces, below its pre-existing, in essence, that was all that it took to qualify for a boundary line adjustment. There wasn't width to depth and all of those things at one point in time. Now, as a reviewed process, there are these additional code provisions in Bonner County Revised Code. So I would say it has been regulated for quite some time, subject to review as a more recent development for Bonner County. Now, as, as it relates to this particular file, there's also confusion and error in regards to how these deeds are being construed. And the first problem is that, and with all due respects, but the Planning Department isn't reading what the instruments say. They just say, a deed's recorded, but you have to look at what the deed is. While it's accurate, anybody can go in and record a deed. Deeds or other instruments get recorded for a variety of reasons. So what we actually have, and I don't know that the commissioners have, the submittal letter or the deeds themselves in the record? I understand you don't.
No, we do.
Okay, so if staff looks, or I mean, if the commissioners have the ability to pull up the contract of sale that I provided by my follow-up letter dated November 20, 2024. In 1968, or excuse me, in 1964, Holman's owned a piece of property. And they conveyed, or excuse me, they entered into a contract of sale with Finney for that piece of property. And so at that point in time, what's called equitable ownership pursuant to the contract, transferred from Holman to Finney of a parcel of property that has a legal description. Now, for reasons not clear, because typically you would record the contract of sale or the notice of contract in the real estate records you'd notice. But this contract of sale wasn't actually recorded until 1971. And that's the instrument number 132310. But because this was pursuant to a contract, there's what's called a fulfillment deed. That's a deed that was signed back in 1964 from Holman to Finney. The purpose of that fulfillment deed is to convey legal title, whereas they already have equitable title, but to convey legal title of parcel once the contract is paid. So you can kind of think of it in today's world, as contracts are still used, but they're not all that common. Typically today, we would have a promissory note with a mortgage or a deed of trust. So those have similar effects. That's a financing for purchase of the real estate. But so anyway, back in 1964, Holman's deeded the property, and this instrument number 583, three, and the copy's bad, I think we've been saying, 360 or the last three. That's the fulfillment deed from Holman to Finney for that piece of property. That deed wasn't released from the escrow and wasn't recorded until 2001. But that's a deed from Holman to Finney. Now, in the interim, while the property was being purchased under contract and Finney's held equitable title, they recorded the 1998 deed, which is the 536593 that questions have arisen. And that effectuated a split of the property that Finney owned into two parcels.
Said, let me make sure I'm on the right one that you're looking at. You said 1998, but mine says 1964. Which one are you looking at?
Okay, so I'm looking at, I want to make sure I'm, yeah, so.
You first started with the contract of sale, so your instrument is 132310-ish?
Correct, yep. 132310, that's the contract of sale from Holman to Finney.
In 1964?
It was signed in 1964, recorded in 1971.
Okay.
Then the next instrument that was recorded is 1998. That's the 536593 deed from William and Evelyn Finney to Charles and Judith Finney. Has my name near the top of the page.
No worries, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm following along with the documents that you're calling out.
Yep. So 536593 split the property that Holman had sold to William and Evelyn Finney into a piece to Charles and Judith Finney, and a piece that William and Evelyn Finney kept. There really wasn't any questions about that during the intro, but that's what split the pre-existing Holman parcel that was sold to Finney into two pieces. Now, after the split between the Finneys is when William and Evelyn Finney paid off and the fulfillment deed was recorded in 2001. That's the 583360. But if you look at that, that's a deed from Holman to William and Evelyn Finney. That deed was in the fulfillment of the contract. Holman had already signed the deed in 1964. It was merely recorded in 2001. So that deed didn't do anything to change when it happened in 1998, when William and Evelyn Finney split the property and sold part of it to Charles and Judith Finney. That's merely a fulfillment deed placed of record, signifying that William and Evelyn Finney had paid it off. Similar to if someone buys a piece of property and grants a mortgage on it, then years later pays it off, there's what's called a release of the mortgage or the deed of trust, you have a reconveyance deed. That's just to show what happened. It doesn't actually change anything with the parcel. So a deed was signed in 1964, but not recorded until 2001, didn't do anything to actually change the then-existing title in 2001, because it had already been split. And Charles and Judith Finney didn't sign this deed, didn't deed it back or anything of that nature. So the 2001 fulfillment deed really doesn't bear on the analysis and doesn't, because it doesn't change anything. And then, the other wrinkle that makes this one a little bit harder to follow is that the legal description used in the, in the 1998 deed, 536593, had some surveying typographical errors. And so that's why in 2002, the correction deed was recorded, because the correction deed corrected what was physically owned by William and Evelyn Finney when they conveyed to Charles and Judith Finney. The legal description of that 1998 had some errors in it. And under the law, the recording of the correction deed relates back and takes effect as of the date of the initial instrument. So that 2022 recording is not an illegal deed. It's a correction deed that relates back to 1998 to correct the legal description. But what was physically owned by William and Evelyn Finney and conveyed to Charles and Judith Finney didn't change. It was just corrected of record and corrected through that instrument. So what we're dealing with is a 1964 split-off piece of property from Holman to Finney, and then a 1998 split of that between William and Evelyn keeping a piece and split the piece off to Judith and Sharon. And so we're dealing with the Judith and Sharon, or the, excuse me, Charles and Judith, Judith's middle name is Sharon. Charles and Judith own a piece of property, and we're asking to, I shouldn't say we're asked, we're having reviewed the boundary line adjustment to take part of that parcel, which is created by the 536593 with a legal description that's some errors that's been subsequently corrected. We're seeking to split that piece and combine part of it with property to the north owned by Roy and Ann Long, who are William and Evelyn's daughter and son-in-law. So that's other property that was split off at various times. So we're combining part of it with their piece, and the Planning Department didn't find any width-to-depth issues with that. And the remainder piece that Judith owns, because Charles has passed away, she's seeking to combine with her other existing parcel, which is adjacent, which is the long narrow piece. The reason it's long and narrow is because over time there were various conveyances, plats and such, and that's what was left. So it's, it's not even a rectangle, it's got all kinds of jogs and such in it. And I submitted with the materials, and you probably saw in there what I've described as the next boundary line adjustment, between the various parcels that Sharon and Judith Finney has, she's going to reconfigure and make the width-to-depth.
You're looking this direction, is this what you're talking about?
Yep, exactly. So that's the, that's the next step. We're not here on it, but up in the very, very upper-left corner. Shows the little piece we're dealing with today. The next step is that's going to get combined and the boundaries adjusted with other property that Judith Finney owns.
You're using, this is the Planning Department's form? And this is in his appeal folder? So that's probably why you're not following what he's doing?
But so as it relates to this boundary line adjustment, we've got three parcels. The smallest one is proposed to be split and attached to the two larger ones, making both of them larger. So our argument under the code is that there is less non-conformity because we're doing away with a parcel that on its own was non-conforming, and we're only increasing the size of any existing parcel. And that the width-to-depth conformity or non-conformity shouldn't trump the overall analysis of whether there's increased non-conformity or not. And then we went beyond that to show the next step that's going to do away with, or that's going to readjust the boundaries to even do away with the perceived width-to-depth non-conformity concern. But obviously, we can't prejudge that, but it'll come through on its own analysis. But that's the intention and the steps. I guess potentially, we could have applied for two boundary line adjustments at the same time. That could have fleshed out potentially any issues that might arise from the second, but I don't anticipate there being any width-to-depth issues there. So the overall non-conformity of the parcels involved is decreased. There's one less parcel overall. There's one less parcel overall, and the other parcels are both increased in size. And so we think it's appropriate at this point in time to get the regulatory approval of the boundary line adjustment that is applied for it is before you. And on our representation and pledge that you're going to then, not you, but the planning department will get the next boundary line adjustment that configures the other existing parcels of Judith Finney that makes them more square. That's kind of the easiest way to describe it on that diagram. And so just to be clear, the 1998 deed, after Tyson Lewis sent the questions and inquiry about doing a certificate of compliance, I provided him the information and he agreed that he understood and that yes, 1998 is the appropriate date to view the creation of the parcel that we're now seeking to split. And we didn't feel like there was any need to go through a certificate of compliance where we'd supplied that additional information. So any questions based upon that?
I do have a lot of questions on this one. Because you are, you are increasing the non-conformity of a single lot.
In one view of width to depth.
Correct. And so that single lot you're saying gets addressed on your next boundary line adjustment. But your current request by admission is causing an increase of non-conformity of one lot.
It's increasing one factor of non-conformity and decreasing other factors of non-conformity by making one small lot totally go away. So there's one less parcel, one less potential house is the way to look at it. And the Long's parcel, which is non-conforming in size is increased. So it's decreasing its non-conformity. And it's not decreasing the, it's actually increasing the width to depth on Long. So it's further decreasing.
So it's giving larger properties on the other and then essentially. What's the reason to not do what was recommended by planning?
Get a certificate of compliance?
Yeah.
Because that doesn't change anything for the boundary line adjustment?
They're, well, they're, and in part, one of their arguments was that the certificate of compliance was going to address the fact of the creation of the other lots. That's what their response was.
Yeah. So Tyson Lewis requested it. I provided him the information. He said it was no longer necessary. Fortunately, he then resigned. He actually came back in for a meeting after he resigned.
So I don't have that one. So that will be a follow-up to planning. Okay. Then I don't have any further.
But the certificate of compliance, I guess I represent, I'm confident it will say it is a complying piece that we are attempting to put with two others. We're not proposing a split right now of the old Holman parcel because that was already completed in 1998. So hopefully staff can perceive that. And I don't know if Bill has any questions, but I don't know exactly how you handle these administrative reviews. But at some point we have further questions, I'd like to reserve the ability to respond.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just have one question. So it sounds like one of your driving points is the fact that you believe that we should be going off the 1998 deed and not the 2022 deed, which supersedes the 2008 change in rules.
Yeah, the 1998 instrument effectuated the split. The 2022 recording of a correction deed corrected an error in the legal description used. And under the law, the correction deed relates back to, it's not a new act, even though it's re-signed and recorded in 2022, it relates back to the instrument in 1998.
Which is pre-2008.
Thanks.
Bill's got his hand, well, he started talking and then went on mute.
My bad. I'm here. John, can you hear me okay?
I can.
You can just, you can just take that microphone and it pops out of there and you can, don't have to pop up and down.
Sure.
That way you can share it with Matt because he's going to have a question as we expect. We'll see if that works. All right, Bill.
Just two, I think two closely related questions. The first one being, what was the necessary change in, from the error that was in the 98 deed that you corrected in 22? And what is the law that, that states the correction deed relates back? I think you've alluded to that and I just would, if you have that off the top of your head, I'd like to just know a little more about that.
Yeah. So I don't have a citation to the cases that provide that, but I can provide those. I didn't, didn't perceive we were going to run down that path. The error in the legal descriptions in the 1998 description that were corrected was because, and I don't want to throw Allen Caber into the bus, but Allen did some surveying that followed a fence as opposed to the deeded line. And it was later determined that the legal description line in that Holman deed didn't jive with the fence. And so the correction in 2022 jives to the Holman to Finney legal description because Edwin and Evelyn Finney owned both pieces. So Allen Caber followed the fence rather than the legal description of Holman.
I'm going to give clarification to Bill since he asked the question. So I'm going to read it as it's stated in the correction deed. It says, whereas the legal description in the warranty deed is based upon certain fences and existing improvements and is an error compared to the record legal description and the party's desire to correct the same. So it doesn't, it then goes on, it does, it's not specifically only fences. It's adding other things into it, but in a way it's also doing lot line adjustment. It continues to say, the parties hereby amend the warranty deed and the legal description, and they're actually changing the lines. So they give a northerly extension of the west lot line. And it goes on to describe how they're moving the lines, but it doesn't say. It's essentially, and I think maybe when I read this, it's like the argument is if a building got placed here, it's, they're addressing the buildings based on where the line is. And my question, I had a question of how does that make something incorrect? Because it actually doesn't say there's a surveying error. It's just saying bases on fences and improvements as far as why there is a correction.
Yeah. So as I said, the legal description was based on the fences. That was the surveying error. So I, the.
Fences and existing improvements. What were the existing improvements? What were the improvements that, because it says fences and existing improvements.
Sure. So if we turn to the night, well, so fences are an improvement and there were some other, there weren't any houses impacted by the description, but I think there's like a garden bed. I might have to dig back in my notes to try to give you an exhaustive list. But if we turn to this 536593 So this is what's called a meets and bounds description. So you start at the true point of beginning, then you take a certain heading. So 890711 west, the distance is 261.14. And I don't know how familiar the commissioners are with this, but I can, if you're familiar to say, yep, I know how meets and bounds works. But otherwise I'll tell you. So south as you, the way I do it is I point to the, what I am saying is south. And then you go 89 degrees. I'm going to ignore the minutes and seconds, west. So 80, south 89 degrees west is basically west, 264.14 feet. That call was based upon the surveyor going to the fence rather than going to the existing Holman description, the north 225 feet of the east half of the southwest quarter, so on. So that's generally an adequate description with a physical distance provided. So the survey used the fence thinking that that was on a line that would be in the north 225 feet, but it wasn't. So then it followed a fence and ran over here and it actually went to a pipe that wasn't on the survey description either. And I don't recall the said pipe in the, in the 536593. I just, I know that's what it said because there was a, some pipes in regards to the Shadow Mountain Valley subdivision plat, which is referenced in that initial deed as well. So the surveyor was running to things that he thought were the parcel, but it was really just a piece of that. And I can't remember if all of it was inside or if there were some overlaps and gaps. But in essence, it had a surveying issue. And so we went back, if we, if you look at the correction deed from 2022, it just says the portion of the, and then it includes what was the then description for the Holman parcel. And then we use the physical plat projection line of lot 37, which is basically the, where the Allen Caber survey was attempting to put it on the ground. And we just projected that. So we, we took the existing parcel and description and made the legal description match what should have been in the 1998 deed as opposed to being in erroneous spots. And I can.
I, one follow-up question, John. I think in this, it may be just me trying to repeat what you said so I can confirm that if I understand your position correctly. So the 2001 deed that actually related back to the original contract made from 1964. Is it your position then that that's really not in the chain of title, so to speak? It's really kind of like a, an offshoot, if you want to call it that, that, that shouldn't have been the, I mean, what's, it seems to me is that the county considered the 2001 deed as the most recent expression of the, the nature of the property at that location. But your position is that, no, that was only filed after the contract was paid off and it had no impact on this other line of deeds, including the 98 one, which is actually the deed that, that the county should be, should have considered as the one in effect in 2008 when the, when that change occurred. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, I don't, I don't want to, there's no assertion that the 2001 recording is somehow improper or not in the chain of title. It is in the chain of title because it's the fulfillment deed, but it was signed in 1964. That's when the conveyance occurred. It gets recorded in 2001. And that's the fulfillment deed, but it's, it didn't create the parcel in 2001. It was created in 1964. Does that?
Are you trying to, but to me that's, it's just saying you're, it's been paid off. This is still the legal description and it's in a way almost reconfirmed in 2001.
It's not reconfirmed. It's placed of record. So maybe let me.
Because it, but it's still, but you're not arguing that the 1998 one wasn't an appropriate deed. And so when they're saying we use 2001, from what you just said, there's really no difference between 2001 other than 1998 because it's just a conveyance of it. So if planning uses 2001.
Yeah. It's not a new conveyance because that's why I say I have to look at the parties. 1964, Holman conveyed to Finney. In 2001, the deed was recorded from Holman to Finney. In 1998, Finney one conveyed to Finney two. Finney two didn't sign anything or record anything in 2001, deeding it back to Finney one or to Holman.
So what about the deed says you shouldn't use 2001, I guess? Maybe that's a too simple way of saying it?
Because the party, so the way a chain of title works and title, with computers, they do it a little differently. But this, the basic concept is you have a grantor, grantee index. So Holman was grantor one to Finney, grantor two. Finney is grantor two at some point in time conveyed part to another Finney, grantor three, grantee, grantee three. So you have three different parties. So the chain of title goes from Holman ultimately to Judith Finney because her husband's now passed away and there's a probate document recorded that we haven't even put into, in the record before you. But that, the chain of title went from Holman to William Finney and his wife. Then part of that went from William Finney and his wife to Charles and his wife. Another potential example that helps is, let's just say there had been no, no split. Holman sold to Finney on contract. Two years later, Finney sells to somebody else, Smith. And they sign a deed and record and Finney's got cashed out, but the new buyer keeps making payments that go to Holman. All these years later, it's paid off and the Holman to Finney deed was recorded. That of record shows the chain of title, Holman to Finney. But many, many years ago, Finney had already sold to Smith.
Because we didn't go to planning? Is that kind of?
Has nothing to do with planning. It's simple.
I mean, the splitting, if you're splitting the property, because you said split.
No, I was saying if there was no splits.
Okay.
It's very common for someone who bought on contract, that person to sell. Maybe they sold on contract, maybe they sold on a deed at that time. So the chain of title just connects Holman on down the line, irregardless of what point in time it was recording. And you don't even have to record a deed in Idaho. A deed is effective between the parties. So there could have never been a deed recorded from Holman to Finney. And it wouldn't change the impact because Finney could prove they owned it. They could show the deed to the county, but they don't have to go record it, for example. Now, we don't have that issue.
Well, and here the question I think is just which deed are we saying was in line before the, that we're using as the document? And so tell me the year so that we're very clear on the record. So you're saying 1998 and planning is saying 2001 is the deed of record. But did you just, did he went like that?
Yeah, I don't know if they're really saying that.
You can just take it and sit down and you want to go back and forth.
Sure.
Really, it goes back to the statement in ours, which is to determine whether or not a parcel is legal, this is not the right application. Right? That is just a certificate of compliance, which was requested from the applicant several times and they decided never to apply for it. So right now, it, it appears that the parcel that they're, they're, they're requiring, requesting to adjust is not legal, but we haven't made that determination. So there's a lot of detail expressed here. I don't know if in 1998, when this parcel was split off, if that was a legal, if it created a legal lot or not, or a legal parcel. So again, this isn't the correct application for that determination to be made.
And so I guess for that, I would ask you, did Tyson tell him he didn't need to do it after his explanation? Because I think that's part of what, he's saying that he had a, a decision that was made that said, this is, you would get that and move forward with a boundary. Because he's going to come back with a lot line adjustment request.
Right. I don't know. I know there's an email chain in the record from Tyson Lewis.
I didn't see Tyson saying that the, what was, because part of when I came into this, it was, it appears as if we're just not following the recommendation of planning so that they can make a determination that would then allow them to be freed up to do the boundary line adjustment. Because it looks like there's a probability that after conformance is confirmed, then we wouldn't even be in this hearing because you would really know the answer. And we're just not confirming conformance. We're just saying, based on the evidence, we think that you would be conforming. That without actually applying for it is what we're being asked to kind of. If we did the boundary line adjustment right now, it's saying we just bypassed the planning department confirming conformance.
Yes. I would, yes. I think, I think you got it right. So I, yeah. And again, it was a night on two grounds and you guys can deliberate on whether or not the legal non-conformity is increasing or decreasing based on a reduction in number of non-conforming total parcels versus the depth to width calculation. So I think what we put in the staff report is the depth to width calculation. You know, the depth to width increases regardless of what the subsequent applications may do to the property. In this case, it's increasing that non-conformity. But we also, on the same grounds, we're saying that the parcel that's being modified is not a legal parcel to begin with. So it doesn't appear to be.
Okay. Bill, did you have any further questions before we go to, what is it, the rebuttal now? Because we've talked a little bit freely.
No, but I do appreciate John and your helping us under, this is a very com, complex kind of historical analysis and I appreciate you trying to help us walk down that road. Given that complexity, it does seem like getting the certificate of compliance first would basically obviate. I mean, if it's as clear as, as you claim it to be, it might be the path, the best option to go that route. And therefore, you know, potentially not have to appeal anything if you can demonstrate that to the planning staff. So that's just my, my perspective.
Yep. So we will go from that to public comment and you just pass it back to Matt?
I think I'm good.
No?
I mean, I totally can understand what John's saying.
He never says no, so he might as well, he always says no.
You know, I think what, you know, there's different things as parallel when you have an unrecorded contract to sell. Those are very popular. I, I was party to many of them in the eighties and even mid nineties. We're actually seeing some more, just the last couple of years because of the interest rates, we're seeing a lot more owner carry contracts. Everybody's heard that term dollar down, dollar a month. And that's what you would do on an unrecorded contract to sell. You actually don't record anything until there's either a fulfillment or a satisfaction of mortgage or a reconvenance to go ahead and, and go from that equitable title to a few simple titles John was mentioning. You know, it sure sounds to me like, and I might be using the wrong terminology here, but it was almost. but it was almost like a wraparound. We refer to it as a wraparound mortgage many times when the one party got, goes ahead and enters a contract, then the person who's receiving that gone ahead and resold prior to that fulfillment deed. Thank you.
Told you you had a comment. All right. So we'll do rebuttals. Yeah. Do you have a rebuttal you want to do?
Thank you, yes. So I'll just place some records. So the, the email that's referred to and is on October 1st, which I think was the next to the last day or the last day that Tyson was working. And I had actually called him before I saw the email. And he said, oh, you got my email? And I said, no, I was calling because I know it's your last day. And we walked through it and he's, he said, okay, I understand the 536593 is the creation deed for the subject that we're seeking to boundary line adjust into two other parcels. And then he did a follow up emails because he knew he was leaving and we had set an appointment for October 23rd, 2024. And unfortunately, I think there was some other big file you were hearing at that exact date and time. So Tyson and I met with Mr. Fisher and reviewed this and it's my, I'll say assertion or recollection that he confirmed at that meeting that he felt 56, 536593 was a deed that created the parcel. As, so, for your record.
No worries, thank you.
Just that, that's why those things happen on the 20th and then we had a follow up on the 23rd, but he was no longer employed on the 23rd. He was on the first when he reached that conclusion. On the 2030, he helped, attempted to help explain all of those components. The certificate of compliance, and I practiced before it came into place, that is a methodology to try to get a quick answer out of the planning department as to conformity. And it was kind of brought forward by the realtors. You know, for better or worse, it's a process. But the, when the county decided to take on reviewing boundary line adjustments, there's no separate requirement to first get a certificate of compliance. And all the steps that are part of a certificate of compliance are part of the county's responsibility obligation as part of a boundary line adjustment review and approval process. So, and I would submit, we met that through the submittals and discussion within staff. Tyson, between submitting this appeal and today, I would assert that's, there's more time than a certificate of compliance might take and there's been ample time to review it. If additional time is needed for the planning department to say they think that this is not, that 536593 is not the creation deed, we could schedule it for some follow up time. But I don't think it's where we're at in the process, that that's the appropriate step to just say no, go back and get a certificate of compliance. I mean, this thing was submitted in, I want to say like April. Nope, not April, it was the first September, excuse me, it was submitted in September and there was short staff. I mean, we're all busy. Things happened, why Tyson couldn't get to it till close to the end of his tenure, but that's where we're at. I will submit to you that whichever process we end up going through, we're going to go through. But I do think it's properly before and I think we've met the burden of showing that it was a proper split in 1998, which is before the 2008 timeframe with, which at times has been called an amnesty or a reset ordinance and that we're just seeking to do away with that parcel, not even trying to keep it. We're trying to do away with it and hook it onto two other pieces of property. So the 30,000 foot level as well as the minutia level, I'll reach the same conclusion in, in our opinion, my opinion, my client's opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Staff, any follow up that you want to give? All right. At this time, we'll close and go into deliberation by the board. Commissioner Corn.
So I'm trying to understand both sides and it seems to me that some or all of this seems to hinge around the change on the county side in 2008. And I would like to see clarification and maybe Bill can step in on this. If the 1998 deed is the deed that we're going off of, then I would have to agree that it would be grandfathered in and doesn't apply to the 2008 change in the rules. But if the 1998 deed is, is not what we're going by, then obviously it does need to apply. But it seems to me, and I'm not a lawyer, I've got a little bit of common sense and the way it was presented, the new deed, if you will, in 2022 is nothing more than affirmation of the correct property lines, not a change in the property lines due to the inadequate survey may be done at the time that it was surveyed before. So to me, it seems to hinge a lot around which deed are we going to go after? Depends on what rules we have to follow.
Okay. Were you wanting Bill to give you an answer to something?
I would.
He unmuted, so I think he was, why is he raising his?
Did you hear my question okay, Bill?
I'm still here.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. So I think you did kind of identify the issues correctly and there's a couple steps that we need to, to get to. The first one being, you know, that, the legitimacy of the 2022 correction deed. I take John at his word to see the, and that it would relate back to the 98 one. The real, to me, it sounds like the crux of the whole matter does depend on whether or not we rely on 98 or 2001. And what Jake alluded to was that, you know, it would, it would be preferable for the planning staff to have done that analysis in the context of a certificate of compliance. John's rebuttal was that you're, you're obligated to perform the same essential functions through the review of the boundary line adjustment process anyway. Perhaps, and it, I don't know, I don't want to speak for the board, but this is one option also to Jake to see if this is viable. Would it be, would it be feasible to, for the board to continue this matter for a date certain to give planning staff the ability to consider the information that John has presented now?
Before he answers that, I think my deliberation might answer what you're going after. So because when you look at 12616, the way in which planning actually makes that determination is by and through the certificate of compliance. And so essentially what's being asked here is that we deem it based on the review of the boundary line adjustment, that that is going to pull in, that it is in compliance. But the planning director has the ability to give a conditional compliance based on review. So the board could make a decision that said, after that it can be conditionally moved so long as it conforms based on the compliance. Because he does, there's, the code itself specifically says that the planning director upon review of the application of the certificate of compliance, he's not being asked to review the application of a certificate of compliance right now. He's being asked to review for a boundary line adjustment. So we're putting the cart before the horse, even though I think everybody is kind of recognizing that the probability is that you would get the boundary line adjustment, but the process is to go and address the fact that there have been lines moved and we cannot at this time confirm without an actual review of the application of certificate of compliance, that it is in compliance that would allow us to move that boundary line. And so there is a way to say, you can be conditionally approved after the, the compliance application is received and reviewed by planning. Because for me, I don't want to leapfrog over compliance because then why would anyone go to planning and ask for a certificate of compliance? If we could say, well, just look at it all, I just want to move this boundary line. But there's a reason that we have that as a process. That's, that's kind of my position on it because I started with the same issue of why are we, how did we decide which one of these instruments that we were using? But in part on planning side is they need to understand it by actually looking at a certificate of compliance because that's what kind of sparks that action. And then if he were, and I'm kind of guessing here, but from the director level, if he were to look at certificate of compliance and determine that, okay, we are in compliance and then you ask for this, I don't know that we would have been here because we, we wouldn't have had the, the lack of understanding of what the actual lots were because he would have come with that confirmation. But we don't have the confirmation. We're making an assumption without following the process that Bonner County put in place through a certificate of compliance. I feel like the question this board is actually being asked to do is to say, this particular request for a boundary line adjustment does not require you to confirm compliance in the practice that Bonner County has set forward. And that's where I have an issue with because the process is there to confirm. If we make a decision to change without the compliance, we could be wrong and not know it in as much as in this very example, the applicant is telling you someone went out and surveyed that, that land and they got it wrong. So we don't know unless we do our due diligence to confirm on the county side. So that's kind of my position on it, that we need a certificate of compliance and that you could do it as conditional pending confirmation if you wanted to do something like that. And then maybe Bill could weigh in on that after I gave that explanation.
Yeah. I think that if we're, if we're confident that this boundary line adjustment, well, the only problem here is that there's still the outstanding nonconforming, whether or not that's being, you know, exacerbated or not. Because if the board were to find that it's not, you know, exacerbating the nonconformity, then if the only remaining issue was this, you know, compliance thing, then I think we could probably have a conditional approval. So just so that the applicant wouldn't have to go through the entire process again and, and duplicate effort.
I think that was one, one part of my thing was on conditional compliance, compliance. My other problem was where if you were to do a boundary line adjustment, you're actually are increasing the problem on one parcel. But the applicant is saying, but if you see our project in its whole, we actually are reducing noncompliance. And I think that's a different, that's a different issue because that's not what we're here for is what your full project is, it's only this one. So for me, I would like to see the condition, the compliance aspect addressed on this before we make a decision. Because you can't, I can't guess at what the nonconformity is. That's my thought on it. What are your thoughts?
I, I think the certificate of compliance would be a good idea and we could make it conditional on that so that you didn't have to come back and go through the process again.
Well, the thing that he'll have to show once, because the conditional, the, the compliance will tell us how out of compliant one of these lots is. And one might be so far out that that's where the question of what are we using? Because we can't by 2008 force something to be further out of compliance. And so that's where that comes into, but we don't know until we confirm compliance. So. And there, you're not trying to build now, are you, sir?
Just to be clear, you're opening back up?
No, I'm just asking you that question, not opening up for comments, just that question. Are you trying to build where there's going to be a significant impact?
There's, there's no proposed building at the time and it's doing away with a lot.
Okay.
The applicants might just decide to apply to put a building on that piece. It's not going to be split. I'm not saying they are, but.
And I, and I don't, I don't think that, I think that everybody recognizes there's an issue with it. I'm on the side of, I want to follow the process that's in place. And the board would be making a decision, if we made a decision on the boundary line adjustment, yes or no, it would say that we were not following the guidance of our own ordinance that says certificate of a compliance. And in this case, the description of the, these lots requires that confirmation. And so we could do it in my, kind of like Bill said, you could say, move forward with your conditional, your certificate of compliance and then come back and make a decision after. You could table it, I guess that might be, that might be an easier way of doing it or you make a decision as is on the, and see what they want to do. What are your thoughts on? And those, that's just my, I.
No, I get it. No, I get it. Either way, it's fine with me. I don't want to put a burden on our citizens, but I do think that we need to follow the county rules, the county codes, obviously. So I don't know what'd be easier on them if we were to just table it or to go ahead and approve it on the condition of the certificate of compliance.
I'm more on the tabling only because I want to know what the noncompliance of the lot would be after a certificate of compliance. Because you can increase the compliance of others, but a lot that would be a standalone could be farther out of compliance. And that is what, that's part of the rule that happened in 2008 that we were trying not to do is to make things less compliant. So can I ask planning, how difficult would it be to do a certificate of compliance on this one?
Some of these take us, Jacob, L. Planning Director, some certificate of compliance take us like an hour to, to review. Some of them take three months. So kind of a difficult question, given the complexity here. One part of this process is we give it to land records and in the assessor's office to help us do an evaluation of the deeds. And that gives us a more of a subject matter expert opinion on what's happening throughout these. And that analysis makes it into our staff report. So without speaking for their workload, probably three to four weeks would be very reasonable. We can definitely get a thorough analysis done. Is then the, the board going to essentially require, the code is somewhat permissive. It says that the citizens may apply.
Well, that was going to be my follow up to the, to the applicant is from, from my view, I want the certificate of compliance. And so do we want a decision that says yes or no on what you've asked for? Which we can do it that way and he could bring it back after, and you guys can choose what you want to do. Or do you want to have a continuation? It could, because I can vote and just say yes or no on what you've asked for and give the decisions. Or we can do something that said to a date certain that would allow them time to figure this out and then we make a decision on this later. And I would say you're looking at the month of February to be reasonable for holidays and commissioner's schedule.
So I don't want to get into arguing unless you would accept some. So I want to make sure I'm just answering the question. So as I understand it, there isn't a pending motion, but there's a consideration of making a motion that would require the three parcels involved to each apply for certificates of compliance. And then once that process is done, to come back in front of the board of commissioners for a decision on this appeal is one thing I've heard. And then the other thing I've maybe heard is approve the appeal subject to a certificate of compliance on the three parcels being completed at the staff level and not come back to the commissioners?
That is what Commissioner Corn said, yes.
So the second one is what we're considering or the first?
We haven't motioned any. I'm asking after you've heard us talk, which one, would you?
Well, I would suspect the latter so that we get this dealt with today. So that would be addressing the width to depth issues if we went with the latter today. And the only condition would be completion of the certificate of compliances. So that would be the preferred.
Okay.
And I would obviously have to review with my clients if they even want to go any further, but.
No worries.
If they do, I think that would be the preference.
Okay. So I'll come back to Jake and ask you this question. With the certificate of compliance, if the lot creates an increased noncompliance on one of the lots, would they get a certificate of compliance automatically or would it say it's not in compliant because the size, because their shift? Because part of my, and I, part of, he wants to say, I don't have to come back if I can get a compliance, but I didn't think the certificate of compliance would address that the widths of one of the property will have more noncompliance, but there'll be greater compliance on the other pieces of property. That's why I'm saying, well, I don't know, because I don't know what the report would say on that to confirm that you can move forward with just saying certificate of compliance.
So a certificate of compliance only makes a determination on if a lot is legal or not, and if it was legally created. And there's a bunch of different rationale behind how to validate a lot and whether or not it's a legal building lot. So.
And explain, I know what I'm, I'm just trying to make you say it.
Yeah, that's fine.
That portion doesn't address the boundary line adjustment that has to do with nonconforming law.
Even if you agree with the, the argument that the 1998 deed is ruling and that the parcels were legally created, we also denied on the second grounds that you're creating a more nonconforming property. So I think Mr. Finney argued that we're, we're trading the idea of two nonconforming lot sizes for a nonconforming depth to width. So essentially we're, we're getting rid of one problem but creating another problem. So the board could make a ruling that, or can make a decision that we see the, the decrease in number of lots, nonconforming size. Again, this is an R5 zone property, I think these are sub two acres, each one of them. So that we see that trade off as beneficial and therefore, you know, we're going to interpret the nonconforming law or the ordinance as such. such, that's not what the planning department's made the decision on. So our decision was, regardless of the swap of issues, the lot size versus the depth-to-width, we, we found that the depth-to-wits, the code specifically says, you cannot make a problem worse through a land use action.
So does the code cover pre-2008 properties?
Regardless of when a property was, was created, through any kind of land use action, whether, like especially, it really comes into effect with lot line adjustments and then land divisions. You can't, if you have a, a sub-zoned property, you can't reduce it down below the lot size it is. So if it's two acres in a five-acre zone, you can't make it an acre and a half. If you have, in this case, of the depth-to-width issue, which is like the, you know, how long and skinny is it? So what's being proposed in this application is it gets more long, more skinny, and it gets worse as far as compliance with that. I think Mr. Finney said that he's going to, or an applicant's going to come in and either divide or boundary line and make these more square and rectangle, which will conform closer to our code. We don't have that application yet, so we didn't take that into consideration. Can I answer your question, Mr. Corn?
I'm trying, so the issues at stake are the depth-to-width ratios, right? Non-conforming is depth-to-width ratios. One's getting worse, one's getting better, and we're losing a lot. We're going from three lots to two lots, right?
That's the getting better, is going from the number of non-conforming total parcels as far as the lot size minimum.
Right. And the argument is that this was, this deed was done in 1998, which was before the depth-to-width ratios existed in Bonner County?
I don't know what the code was in 1998, I mean, this was created in a legal fashion. So, but if, if the 1998 deed is ruling, and it created a legal lot, then in 2008, when our code became effective, we would see that as a legal lot.
Right.
In this case, they're not reducing the lot size below what it is now.
Right.
They're making that problem better, right?
Right.
So we want to see more, more conformity to our code. But the bigger lot, which I think is a little over 20 acres, if I remember right, is getting worse in depth-to-width ratio.
Getting longer, right. And could you just answer, so that I fully understand, if they were to get a certificate of compliance, what would that show us?
It would tell us whether or not the middle property, which is, by our understanding, is unknown whether or not it's legal, it would answer the question, you know, definitely whether or not that was a legally created property.
Okay.
Did you see the math?
It's a very complex issue.
Yes, it's this one here, right?
Nope, just wanted to make sure you settled.
Yeah. Okay.
Any further deliberation by the board?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
All right, I'm going to make it, and then you're going to amend it, unless you would like to step down.
I'm not going to do that.
I make a motion that we, that we approve this on the condition of, on review of the certificate of compliance.
I'll second the motion to advance it for discussion. So on this one, the reason I don't want to approve it based on that is, the answer from planning is that, once they do the certificate of compliance, it is going to address the legality of a lot, but it's not going to address the non-compliance of the lot, which has to be addressed by the board. And so there, we're not answering all of the questions that arise on this particular file. What are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, no matter how the certificate of compliance comes back, I see that it would be a positive move to go from the three lots to the two lots. And instead of going the other way, usually the applicants are coming, wanting to increase the lot, the number of lots. This applicant's coming forward, wanting to decrease the number of lots, which I think is in a positive direction. Yes, I understand the depth-to-width ratio, I can see the picture of it, it's getting longer. But, and Bill, you might want to help me out here, I want to make sure that we're doing the legal thing, and not just personal.
I think what, what, the argument that John made was that the, the analysis of whether or not non-conformity is increasing or decreasing is not just one component, but several. So the, the depth-to-width ratio is one component of that analysis, but if you think that, you know, the decrease in the number of lots is, or any other criteria that you choose, is more important to you, then you could, you could conclude that, as a whole, the non-conformity is decreasing. That, you could do that if you wanted to.
Okay, because I'm also going to...
I'm going to pause only on one thing, because Bill is supposed to give us legal advice, not act as a third person to deliberate with.
I asked if it would be legal, and it sounds like it would be legal.
And I want to be clear on that when we're deliberating on the topic. My problem is that, I agree that the reduction in the number, but it doesn't address the size question. So we would only have part of the information by which we'd be making a decision if we voted without knowing what the depth-to-width ratio is for the conformance issue. We wouldn't know everything about the problem, because we haven't done the certificate of compliance. So we would be saying, we'll assume that the impact to one, when what comes into play on the depth-to-width is our rules regarding increasing non-conformity of a single lot, which is essentially what we're doing. And we might have cost benefit, that one is better than the other, but we would be guessing it versus knowing it. That's my, that's my issue. So...
And on the depth-to-width ratio, on the depth-to-width ratio, I'm looking at this, it's over 20 acres in size, and it's zoned R5. Is that correct? So I'm going to guess, and I, maybe I shouldn't be guessing in my position, but they're going to want to split that in half or something, and make two tens or something like that, which would then be conforming to the depth-to-width ratio?
I am not going to make an assumption on what they'll do in the future, because I'm only supposed to look at what they're asking me right now. Sorry.
No, I get it. So what are you proposing?
Well, we're deliberating your motion right now. On the, the certificate of compliance would allow them to move forward with the, with the change.
I think, I think that's where I stand.
Okay, roll call vote? No?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't do questions after that was the vote?
Is this public comment time?
No, I wasn't going to ask a question, I was going to offer another potential way to proceed, which if we're here, that seems efficient, not recognized.
No, go ahead.
So if there is a consideration of a conditional approval, one condition could be the certificate of compliance on the subject piece that there's concern about, and the other could be that we submit the boundary line adjustment that's been represented, and I would say, it goes to this guessing comment, I mean, we've submitted what we're, what's going to be next is 25.2 acres, plus the small piece, 16.6 and 15.4. So it would seem that the board could consider a double condition, two conditions, to address the other concern that was stated. That's my suggestion, because we're here.
I, well, I think that if you had presented what your full plan is, after you have a certificate of compliance, it will show the shift of non-compliance that would allow, for me, to make a decision on, is the shift of non-compliance versus compliance outweigh the risk? But that's not, even at the application that's in front of us, it's only one part of the adjustment, it's not in total. And so my recommendation is, do the certificate of compliance and come back with what your plan is fully, because I don't think we're off, I think it's, how do you fix it? And there's, certificate of compliance doesn't answer everything that exists on this particular parcel. And I actually think your suggestion does answer more, but that's not what was presented in the hearing. You didn't present that as, that's not the application. The application is just for this one. Do you have an application for the greater one that shows in total? Okay.
No, but that's why we submitted it in support of the appeal.
All right, it is 2, oh, did we, did we read all of our stuff? And now I lost track.
Right now. I don't think the board's made a decision yet, right?
I think we didn't read the, he made a motion, but we didn't read.
And I do, I just realized, when I read over these motions, it has some language in there of the previous administrative appeal file, we needed to update that, so.
Okay.
My apologies for not catching that.
So we did on Corn. So I am going to make a motion to affirm staff's decision, or, excuse me, I move to affirm the planning staff's conditions of...
Yeah, like I said, this, this, I just read it, and I'm like, ah, no. So it should be, affirm the planning staff's decision as written in the decision letter for file BLA 004624, if that's what you're going to do. My apologies, I should have cut that.
This is...
So we're denying the appeal?
If that's what you're choosing to do. I know. If I had to recess for 10 minutes, I can go right out and do a motion for you.
All right, so I will move to affirm the planning staff's decision as written in the collective report from project file BLA 0046-24. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff memo was prepared and testimony received at this meeting. The action does not result in taking a private property. I'm going to add in a couple of things that, the, throughout this hearing, one of the things that is mentioned is the lack of planning being able to complete a certificate of compliance because there was none received. And 12616 identifies that, upon reviewing the application, the planning director determines the lot or parcel resulting from a division of land complies with the application provisions of the code and in effect at the time the decision occurred, and upon the effective date of the determination pursuant to this section. The planning director, at that point, shall record on a form provided by the planning department a certificate of compliance with the Bonner County Recorder. The certificate of compliance shall identify the lot or parcel, and shall state that the lot or parcel resulting from a division of land complies with the applicable provisions of the code and effect at the time the division occurred. Since this hasn't occurred for me, as a commissioner, I believe that we need a certificate of compliance, so that we can clearly identify, and then move forward with how the division impacts a boundary line adjustment for the lot size. We, I don't have the information that allows me to say that the boundary line adjustment is not creating greater conformance without having followed those steps. If the applicant wanted to follow through with any of the steps that planning has recommended, and bring back the project in total to show how the compliance of two lots outweighs the non-compliance of the one lot, I think the board would consider that. But at this time, the application is solely for a boundary line adjustment as provided without a certificate of compliance. So I would support affirming the decision of the planning department, and encourage the recommendation of the certificate of compliance. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any deliberation from the board?
None.
All right, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Was that enough deliberation? Okay, all right, it is 2:48, and this meeting is...